They're ready to go.
Call to order this session of the Atwater City Council for October ninth, two thousand and seventeen. If you'll please all rise for the pledge allegiance followed by invocation by Chaplain McClellan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our fathers, we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. And father, our hearts are very heavy right now, Lord, we've had some firefighters that have been killed fighting a fire. We ask that you be with their families at this time, Lord, give them strength. And Lord, we have many that are out on the lines right now. We ask right, Lord, Lord, to protect them, build a hedge around them, and get them home safely, get them home to their families. Lord, may they be able to take care of the fires that are going. We do pray for our police that are patrolling tonight. Well, we ask that you have your hand upon them, Father, that you protect them and get them home safely. We do pray, Lord, as we've come here tonight to meet, Lord, to discuss the affairs of our city. We ask, Lord, to give our council members and our mayor wisdom. And father, we, Lord, we ask right now that everything that is said and done tonight would be that to glorify thy name. For we do ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, please. Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Biera?
Here.
Vineyard?
Present.
Price? We have a quorum. There are no, there are no subsequent need items, and so we move to approval of agenda as posted or amended.
Mr. Bramble, please.
Actually, I will be making an announcement prior to the consent calendar.
Okay, very good.
But there's no changes in the agenda.
Okay, in that case, are there any items to which the council would like to amend or add, delete? Hearing none? Entertained motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second. Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Biera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Presentations: Introduction of Merced County Association of Governments Executive Director Patrick Pittinger and Presentation of the Regional Transportation Plan.
Mr. Pittinger, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Pittinger, I'm the Executive Director of the Merced County Association of Governments. And I'm relatively new, about three and a half months on the job, and I'm very pleased to be before you today for the first time as this body. I've met some of you previously. Just as a reminder, Merced County Association of Governments oversees transportation planning, the administration of Measure V funds, oversees the operation of the county bus system, the Yards Bus System, and as well the regional Waste Management Authority. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over here shortly to Matt Fell, a senior transportation planner, to talk about the regional transportation plan. And this is really an exciting time for the agency and for the area because the regional plan happens about every four years. But for the first time in some time, there's actually some funding that's going to be able to be planned for. Now, with the passage of Measure V at the local level, with funding for the next thirty years, as well as SB one at the state level and other funding sources, there's actually some really significant planning to be done as far as how to maintain and improve our transportation system going forward. I will turn it over to Mr. Fell and let him go through the relatively brief presentation we have here this evening unless anybody has a question for me.
Any questions for Mr. Pittinger? Thank you, Patrick.
All right, thank you, sir.
Matt, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Fell, I'm a senior planner with Merced County Association of Governments. And we wanted to give you an update on our regional transportation plan, so I'll just go ahead and get right into it. What is our regional transportation plan? It's kind of a road to the future in terms of planning to get major transportation, major transportation projects going. First, there has to be a plan, takes a long time sometimes to get some of these projects, but basically, you know, this is one of the first steps. The regional transportation plan covers twenty-five years, so we're looking all the way out to twenty forty-two this time. We're looking at a number of different things, not only roads, but also bicycle, pedestrian facilities, transit system. We're even looking at passenger rail this time, and of course, road maintenance. The document guides transportation investments, so it doesn't make the final decision, but a lot of projects need to be in the RTP before they can proceed. It links land use, housing, employment, we have to look at all those different things and how the plan can best serve the growth plans of your jurisdiction and all the other jurisdictions in Merced County. And finally, we have to comply with a lot of federal and state laws and rules, environmental laws, environmental justice laws, a whole slew of things. And our plan does all those things while, while we're guiding these investments. Regional planning is basically planning that involves all the jurisdictions of the region, all the people of the region. So it's the county, the six cities, all working together as Merced County Association of Governments. The good news from transportation funding perspective is that there is transportation funding now. So there's been a dramatic increase in the amount of revenue available for transportation improvements and maintenance. Measure V passed in November, and we've got the pie chart up there that shows how that gets spent. So half of that, the green slices, are the local money that gets, your share gets decided by this body for local projects and local alternative mode projects. And then there's the orange and the yellow slices, which are the regional projects, which get decided by the MCAG Board. And there's committees, an East Committee and a West Committee, to recommend those projects to that body. And then there's a slice for transit, bus improvements. Also, SB one passed earlier this year, the state legislature, that's the gas tax increase, and that's going to fund a lot of maintenance. It's a fix-it-first type bill, so there's a lot of maintenance on state highways, there's a lot of maintenance dollars that comes to local jurisdictions. And there's increases for passenger rail, there's a whole bunch of things in there. If you have any questions on SB one, feel free to contact me or our agency, and we can help to get, get you that information. Very important to the RTP is outreach, so we do a lot of public outreach. We've done one round of workshops where we kind of set the stage and ask people in general what they were feeling about transportation and housing choices and those kinds of things. And then we took that and we're creating some scenarios, which I'm going to talk about in a second. And those are some different options for our plan. We're going to be doing that outreach very soon. And then we're going to be putting together a draft plan, and we're going to be going back out and doing more outreach in the spring, about March and April. And we're looking to adopt a final plan about June or July. So this is a long process, but it's broken down in distinct chunks, and each time, there's public outreach. So that's the timeline. We also have a website, and we have online surveys. So folks who can't come to a workshop in person, they can see the same presentation and materials that were shown at the workshop, and then they can take the survey online, so they can get their feedback in that way as well. And I think I have, yeah, in the back, I have flyers, so anybody, if you're interested, please take one of these flyers and pass it around, the information around, basically, the workshops are on here, when and where they are. The first one is Monday, October twenty-third, two weeks from today, in Los Banos. And then the second one is Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, in Livingston. And the last one is Thursday, November second, in Merced, they're all at six-thirty. And it's going to be an exercise where there's going to be a little bit of information and background. And then we're going to let people look at a lot of exhibits that show what the different scenarios are and what they mean in terms of transportation and growth. And then we're going to bring everybody back to do some voting on which scenario they prefer, which kind of transportation investments they prefer. And the point, the main point of this second round of workshops is to gather as much feedback as we can so that we can take that to the MCAG Board, so that they can pick a preferred scenario for our environmental document. And that's the website that I was mentioning, and we have all of our workshop dates on there, as well as the online version of the workshop will be on there in two weeks. And the new survey will be on there, there's a survey on there right now from round one, so anybody who hasn't participated in that, feel free to jump on there while that's still there, and then there'll be a new survey on there in two weeks. And then lastly, if you have questions or comments, you can contact me. And you can also contact our outreach task manager, we have a consultant team helping us with outreach as well as doing the number crunching and preparing the scenarios. And if you have any questions on the RTP, I'd be happy to answer those now, or at any time, really.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Fell, Mr. Gray?
You mentioned housing, how does that tie into this transportation bill?
Right, so in a couple of different ways. One is that when we're forecasting the future to serve, for the transportation plan to support, we need to know what the future population growth and housing growth is going to be. So we have forecasts of what that housing growth is going to be. And a key consideration for our plan is the breakdown by housing type. So that's very important in terms of transportation, how it responds to the different housing types, and those are broken down by jurisdiction.
To using the, the general plan?
Right.
So municipalities like us that are behind on our general plan update, what assumptions do you guys make off of that?
We use the existing information. So the existing general plan serves as a basis, and we communicate with the city staff to talk about how, how the scenario themes will play out in the city of Atwater. So for example?
The Ferrari Ranch project coming in?
Right.
That's not in our current general plan, how do you adjust for that?
Well, we kind of guess, so we use a best guess based on local plan or knowledge of that. And so the feedback from both the city and the county was, basically, it's a good idea to assume that that's going to happen by twenty forty-two.
Because where I'm going with that is the, the regional MME, Merced and Atwater Expressway?
Oh, right.
How that's going to, you know, when we build that out, that'll induce some growth over there, then those transportation needs aren't even there yet.
Right.
So we're looking and talking about those issues right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we are?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, that's actually a very salient point. This, this exercise, this regional transportation plan is trying to accommodate and discuss exactly those kinds of things so that we can lay the groundwork for those transportation investments.
Gray?
Yeah, Matt did an outreach with myself and the staff a couple of weeks ago. We talked about Ferrari Ranch and a number of other future projects.
How to tie together Castle, the expressway, the whole thing?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Fell? Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next item is our monthly verbal report by Merced County District Three Supervisor McDaniel.
There's Darren.
Hiding over there on the side. Mayor, council, thank you very much. It's been a while since I've been here, seems like it's been a little longer than a month. Last time, it was the day before we were having our final budget brought before us, we did pass our final budget, over six hundred million dollars. The deputies did receive a ten percent raise from September to September, that's a seventeen percent raise, and they'll still get their other raise coming up on July first. It'll be a total of twenty percent in a year and a half. The website for Merced County is up and running in full force, I can say that I have actually tested it. It also has a mobile site on it as well, so if you use your phone, you can bring it up. There are requests and complaints that you can do. And I've, I've practiced on both of those accords, and I was very surprised in how quick staff was to call back. And I have to say, they didn't know that it was the supervisor making the request. So after they started talking to me for a little bit, they're like, there was a little pause, and I go, is this Supervisor McDaniel? I'm like, yes, it is. And so the fact that they didn't know that I was the supervisor and they had a fast response like that. We do have two other websites, they're going to, it's any day now. We have an economic development website that's for the entire county. We're still waiting for cities to get their information into us. We're looking at maybe going ahead and implementing the website with the certain city tabs, so whenever it becomes available, they will be able to tap into it. And we also have another one with Castle that should be any day at this point, be able to implement that website. We're just waiting for some finalized numbers, we want to make sure everything's correct when we put, before we make it live. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Supervisor McDaniel? Mr. Raymond?
I don't know if it's too secret squirrelish, but can you elaborate on your trip to the port of LA, how that went?
It, it went very well. It's something we've been in discussions for a long time with the port of LA. We're just looking at opportunities to tie in to the opportunities we have here in Merced County to be able to export through the port of LA. So a couple of weeks, we have more exciting news to come.
Fantastic, thank you.
You got it. And as you know, Senator Anthony Canela and Assembly Member Gray have their Valley to Valley meeting tomorrow night. It's very important, it coincides with a lot of stuff that we're working on as well, so with the county. Good question.
And you have your meeting here, or your open forum here, on the fourth Thursday of every?
Yes. Yes, it's the fourth Thursday of every month from one-thirty to three-thirty. Yeah, fourth Thursday of every month.
Just wanted to make sure.
Some folks, when there's five Thursdays, we get people to show up on the fifth Thursday sometimes.
Yeah, okay, well, just wanted to make sure people were cognizant of that, okay?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're getting, getting regulars, and it's been, it's worked out very well. And we have, not only do we have somebody here from the federal office, but both state offices, as well as somebody from the city and the county as well.
Okay, if there's no further questions, thank you, Darren.
You got it, thank you.
Next item is comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it is, if it requires action, it will be referred to staff and or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Mr. Hernandez, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to announce a, a homecoming for our Atwater High School graduates that were in conflict over the last fifty years. On October the twentieth, during the Turlock High School football game in between the varsity and the JV game, we are going to honor eight surviving war veterans that graduated from Atwater High. This is going to be a very important function. It's already been approved by the principal of Atwater High School, Mr. Johnson, Activities Director Nathan Braga, and the Atwater PD Resource Officer, Mr. Martin. What's going to be different about this is that we, we're going to have a whole ceremony also for the four members of Atwater High School that graduated, that were killed in action. And those four men, this is the first time they're going to be brought out public, are Walter James Seidel, from the class of sixty-four, Richard Thomas Havel, from the class of sixty-seven, Charles Richardson, from the class of sixty-eight, and James Strobel, from the class of sixty-eight. Now, I would like to ask anybody that knows any family members, or if any family members hear this, I would like for them to contact me. We would like to have any of those members at our presentation on Friday the twentieth. My phone number is area code two oh nine, seven seven seven, four seven zero two. Now, this is the first of its kind, anywhere in the country, I don't think it's ever been done that I know of. And I've been in several states that are very big with their veterans. And this is going to be an event that's going to take place every year from here on out. The members that are being recognized, some graduated lately in the class of two thousand and two. And it includes men and women. So this isn't one of these things, you know, that's, that's just been put together, you know, yesterday. I've worked on this thing for six months already to get some of this information and verify it. And for the public of this city, for those of us that went and served this nation, we never got a homecoming, and this is something that we deserve from the standpoint of those that are going to be presented that night. I would like to see some participation of this community. And hopefully, we'll have a lot of success with this, you know, because this is a long time coming for a lot of our war veterans that reside in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Sounds like a great cause.
Hi, my name is Lori Johnson, my address is sixteen seventy-five Drakely Avenue. We've been, we've been pleading here in front of the council for way too long to not have any, any solution. And during, sorry, and during the long task of calling every county, state, and federal agency for help, I think it is time for our pleas to be dealt with by you and now, not later. We've already missed out on too much, too much life. Everything that has been done to us and still going without water has taken a major toll on us physically, mentally, and financially. We have missed funerals, family reunions, family reunions, our daughter's graduation from Navy boot camp. Now we will miss her graduation from A school this Friday. After that, she will be training at the trauma center in Chicago. I am expecting to let her down again and miss that graduation. Then she will be catching babies in Virginia, the state next to my son. So I know, so I know how that goes. I haven't seen him in three years. I think it's time for the BS to be over, we need to be able to get on with our lives before it's too late. My brother in New Mexico was in a coma. I hope you guys remember me sharing this experience with you. He is not the same person that I grew up with, and it is very important that I make a connection with him. All of this has isolated me from my family and friends. My brother-in-law, my brother-in-law Timothy passed away a month and a half ago, we hadn't seen him in four years. Let's not let this keep us from living anymore. I may be breathing, but I'm sure I'm definitely not alive. The life has been taken out of me, and I want it back. I used to be able to find joy in just about anything. Now my light has been snuffed out, this has changed me so much, my closest friends and family don't recognize me anymore. Do the right thing, allow me to find the joy in my wonderful life that we have built as a family. Please don't let my pleas go unheard, stand to honor our military, our flag, and our constitutional rights. Thank you.
This is bad, this is terrible what you guys have done to us. We are good people. We've got to go through hell here. And I ain't just blaming Rice, Mayor Price, I'm blaming all of you right now. Not a single one of you have done a damn thing to help us. Where's the freaking help in our community? Our, our, we live here too, we are citizens, residents, a homeowner, military family. And damn you guys for not doing your damn jobs. You did nothing for us, you have done nothing for us, not one freaking time in this damn city. My wife's right, she, we, two, I can't even hardly speak, this bullshit.
Richard, that's enough, you're done.
Okay, you know, Mayor, you always say that just to shove me up.
Richard, no, Richard.
I didn't say nothing wrong, I said nothing wrong, trust me. I said nothing wrong.
Chief.
Hold on, I, I watched a lot of council meetings, and I said nothing. I'm being nice too. Trust me, I'm being nice too, buddy. I'll be, go to jail, I guess. I didn't say five minutes, the clock didn't even start. You're over. I said nothing wrong.
We're going to adjourn this meeting for ten minutes.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Mr. Johnson, I'm, I apologize, you were out of the room. If you wish to speak for public comment, you're welcome to do so.
Frank Johnson, six oh eight Thirteenth Street, Modesto, California. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. It's still unanswered about the detective who worked or didn't work and received employment pay for two years. I think I have the answer, which will be coming forth very soon. There's many unanswered questions that I've put before this council. A lot of them are being answered, which will be coming forth. As a whole, Atwater's a good city. There are people in this room who want to know who I, me, us, the organization, who we are. I'm here early.
I'm here early, and sometimes I leave the last one. No one has bothered to approach and ask me that question, but they come before council and ask that question. The other issue is, I have a reason to be here. I have a right to be here. Atwater as a whole has a lot of hidden agendas. Pandora's box is open. And what comes out of Pandora's box, no one can put back. But we all have an opportunity to do what's right. And that's what I come before you tonight. Let's do what's right. There's an opportunity to do what's right. I'm not gonna take any more of the council's time. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, let me just take a moment. Anyone here is welcome to come before the council and speak before the council. But I am going to insist that there be a certain quorum, if you will. When there's cussing or any of that sort of thing going on, personal attacks, that type of thing, I'm gonna intervene, as I did tonight. I am not gonna allow for swearing and this type of thing. You're in a public forum. This is being viewed over television. I'm just not gonna tolerate that. So I apologize if, you know, people were a little bit upset about that sort of thing that I exercised this evening. But this is the way I choose to run the meetings here, and that's the way it's going to be. It has no reflection on who was speaking and the content of what they were, they wanna speak about. They can speak to anything they wish. But we're gonna make sure that when those items are brought forward by the public, that there's gonna be a certain amount of forethought in how they're saying it and what they're saying and the words that they're using. Okay? So I apologize if I kinda upset people here, but that's the way I choose to do, okay? All right, next agenda item, and I think you've already announced it.
We have, moving back to the consent calendar, the notice to the public has already been read.
Any items on the consent calendar that any member of the council would like to remove for separate consideration? Mr. Bramble?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a couple of notes on the, two items on the consent calendar. One, on item four, unfortunately, we did not include in your packet the cost estimate for the Merced Union High School District School Resource Officers. We wanted to make sure that you had that material in front of you as you obviously vote on the consent calendar. And the second item is item six, which is general municipal elections. As we were going through one final time, we noticed a typographical error which indicated that for the two thousand eighteen election, they had it incorrectly stated in the ordinance, or we did. And it should be districts three and four for the two thousand eighteen election, as opposed to one and four. And then the twenty twenty election would be districts one and two instead of two and three. So just typographical errors, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of them.
Mr. Raymond?
I'd like to pull item six from the consent calendar.
Okay, number six. Any others? I'd like to pull item number ten, just for public information on that. So, number six and number ten, any others? Okay, entertain a motion for a remainder.
Second.
Okay, call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to item number six, under ordinances, waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance number CS nine eight nine, amending chapter two dot one zero, general municipal elections of title two, administration and personnel of the Atwater Municipal Code to transition from an at-large election system to a district-based system for the city council members.
You pulled it. Go ahead.
I just pulled it to vote separately.
Oh, 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 that's different, okay. All right.
So you need a motion in a second.
Okay, okay, motion, Mr. Vineyard?
Motion to approve item number six, as amended by the city manager.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, call for the question.
Raymond?
No.
Vera?
No.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
No.
Price?
Yes.
Motion fails. Item number ten. Fire department activities and projects for the month of September twenty seventeen.
Actually, for this, I pulled it so that we might get an update on the strike teams that are leaving out of Atwater and for the public's information on just how that leaves us staffing-wise and what have you, just for their information.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the strike teams met up. We sent one engine out of Atwater City. It was engine forty-two. We have still two frontline engines. Engine two forty-one's being used on the Broadway Station at Station forty-one. And truck forty-two is still in quarters and staffed at Station forty-two. We did staff engine forty-two as part of the strike team going to the Lobo Fire in Nevada, Huber Plaza. And it was part of two Merced County engines, an Atwater City engine, a mid-air city engine, and a Merced city engine with the strike team later out of Clovis City. As far as projected date, I would say at least a week and a half to two weeks, probably a commitment time for those resources to be gone. Yeah, but staffing's still good. We got a total of two out of our nine paid staff employees on that, on that strike team.
And, and just for clarification, the funding for any kind of these strike teams is not coming out of the city funding, correct?
No, it should be funded out of the OES budget and then refunded back to the city.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's all I was wanting to bring forward on item number ten. So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Interim City Manager reports an updates verbal report regarding purchasing manual.
Mr. Mayor and Council realize that this is a project that has been out there for a little while, and we're kind of responding to the Controller's Office as well as the city council goals for operational priorities and to make sure that we've got a system that, that works. So staff had a training session last week. We went through the new ordinance as well as the, the manual, found a couple of just processed items that need to be worked on, made sure that the staff was aware of, of moving kind of from the decentralized system to more of a decentralized system with centralized oversight. We're still working on the adjustments that the auditors had requested we make to the manual regarding credit cards, fraud policy, and employee reimbursement policies. So we are making good progress. Our objective is, is to try to make the twenty-third of October for our first reading, and we'll do everything we can to accomplish that. But worst-case scenario would be the November thirteenth meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bramble pertaining to the purchasing manual? Okay, next time.
Public hearings. Waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS nine eight two, amending the City of Atwater Municipal Code Title Eight, Chapter eight dot six zero, or eight dot six oh, Medical Marijuana Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen dot zero six, to address commercial marijuana operations in the context of crop cultivation and industry and industrial operation. And Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen dot seven five of the city's development code to add a new section, seventeen dot seven five dot one two zero, pertaining to the standards for commercial marijuana operations.
Okay, Mr. Bramble?
Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'm gonna take a little extra time on this. I'm sure that a lot of the, well, I know a lot of the people that's in the room have, have read the thirty-six, thirty-eight pages of the, of the report, but we've got people in the audience as well as hopefully viewing that haven't had that opportunity to read the ordinance. So I'm gonna go through some of the most important provisions of the ordinance, and then obviously you'll open it up for the hearing. So the city council's effort has been, has been to properly regulate a new privileged license process with proper controls and oversight that will protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. The ordinance, as it's presented by the Community Development and Resources Commission, allows for cultivation, processing, extraction, manufacturing, testing, distribution, growing. I'll talk a little more about that inside. And the transport of the product from a Atwater location to another licensed facility. What it doesn't allow is it doesn't allow dispensaries. It doesn't allow for growing of cannabis outdoors in either residential or commercial areas. And as the Community Development and Resources Commission recommended, it does not limit the number of licenses. It provides for twenty-four-hour security through a service, but not necessarily an onsite twenty-four armed guard, and it will be a decision of the chief of police to make as to what type of security will be necessary for each one of the businesses. It has a provision for a development agreement which discusses not only the architectural and plans for the building, but the necessity for public outreach, education, community service, and then there is an annual review by the city council. There is an educational fee, and once a program is established, that fee would be instituted in the, the provision of the ordinance. In addition to that, these facilities, because they're industrial in nature, would be allowed in M-one, M-two, and business park overlay zones only, so none in the residential areas. There is an annual oversight. I've talked a little about one part of it, but the chief of police will regularly oversee all of the permits. If there is a regulation that is violated by the operator, then it would be necessary for the Community Development and Resources Commission to hold a hearing as to the violations of the regulatory permit. In addition to that, as I already mentioned, the city council will annually review the development agreement as to whether there's been progress made in, in each one of the areas and if they've made any changes to the architectural design of their building. But, but you would talk to them about education, public outreach, community services, et cetera. And there may be other items that you put in the development agreement at the moment when, when you meet with the, with the applicant. The restriction, there are restrictions. It can't be within six hundred feet of a public or private educational facility. There are the following permits by the local jurisdiction. There are state permits as well, but I'll just go through the, the local. So there is a business license requirement. There's a regulatory permit that's heard by the Community Development Resources Commission. Employee permits are required, which is reviewed by the chief of police. And there's a revenue raising fee that is established for each business that opens up within the city of Atwater. And there are two types of regulatory fees. One is for cultivation and nurseries, and the other one is for processing, testing, manufacturing, and extract, extracting and distribution. They're pretty much the same, but, but they, they start out with ten dollars a square foot. In the case of the cultivation and nurseries, it's ten thousand, ten dollars a square foot for the first twenty-five hundred square feet, and then two dollars and fifty cents thereafter for the total size of the building. Now, there's some exclusions like the employee lounge and parking lots, et cetera, but it's the canopy of the property. In addition to that, for processing, testing, and manufacturing, it's ten dollars a square foot for the first three thousand square feet, and then two dollars and fifty cents thereafter. So there are some fairly significant fees, and this is the cost that would caught, or this is proposed to cover the cost of the oversight by the police department. This is a first reading of the ordinance, and you have a public hearing, and I will stop there and answer any questions that I can answer, otherwise I'll punt it to the, to the city attorney.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Bramble? Okay, Mr. Creighton?
You were speaking about the fees, and I wanted to make sure I couldn't find it in here. It may be in here. When it comes to Merced County, the Ad Commissioner, those type people, that we won't be shouldered with absorbing those fees within our fees. I don't see the verbiage in it. Any additional fees beyond what we put in our ordinance would be the sole responsibility of that business owner.
Well, it'd be the same with the state permits, so.
But where's it, how do we have?
I don't think it, well, I'm gonna, I'll punt to the city attorney as to whether we need it.
You know, I don't know that I remember specific language to that effect either, but remember that when there are multiple agencies with jurisdiction over a particular issue such as this, we have, the state has authority over these licenses and the ability for people to run these types of businesses, and then we have authority based on this. They, they run concurrently, so ours does not get rid of any other fees.
Okay, so let me be more specific. If we were to be charged a fee from the county?
If we, as the city was to be charged a fee?
Would we be liable for that, or would it just pass through to the applicant, and they're bearing all the fees? How are we protected on, is my question.
Uh, that's a really good question, and I do not know the answer to that because I did not know that there was an ability for us. This is, I'm really sorry. We kinda divat our work. You guys know Rosie's been the one that's quarterbacking this, but the, if, so your question is if the county imposes a fee on the city of Atwater, can we pass that through? And if it's not in here, we should definitely add that language if that's a concern.
The language in there, maybe one sentence that covers us on that.
Okay, so I will take a look at it and see if there is anything in here that covers that, and if not, then we can bring that back, if that is the council's pleasure.
Just for the general public's knowledge also, this is brand-new to us, the industry, and we're codifying this so that there is something on the municipal code come January when the state approves this and forces it down our throat. So we're trying to catch every little thing now before we codify it. So it's really important that, that if you have comments or whatever else also, to please share those.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the council? Mr. Raymond?
Uh, no, it's in here, six hundred feet from schools and educational facilities and private residences. But what about churches? Is that, I couldn't find it. I was going through.
I don't believe that it, it specifies churches. It's only from educational facilities.
Okay, I would like to, if we can, everyone agrees, add that, six hundred feet from churches as well. There was already a fight in Sacramento or San Francisco, I can't remember, and the industry actually lost, and so they can't be within X amount of feet from churches as well, and I think we only owe it to them.
And would, are you finished?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. With respect to schools, would a daycare facility also fall into that, or is that an add-on as well?
Uh, I think we should make it clear, if you wanted to include daycare facilities, rather than leaving it to interpretation, let's add that as well.
Okay. Mr. Creighton.
Um, on that topic, what about residential, how far, so would they move right up next door to my house if I lived by that zoning? Six hundred feet? We just had a couple of issues in the newspaper that were pretty, uh.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about in terms of, if you're talking about, you're talking about the commercial aspect of it only, because residential, anybody can grow it in their own home.
No, the res- yeah, how close to res- six hundred feet also with residential?
You wanted to, including residential.
Well, that's why my question is, do we have it specified how close we get to residential? If you live next to an industrial park and you're across the street, are you gonna be looking at that facility, or is it gonna be six hundred feet, a thousand feet, two hundred feet?
So, the only separation that I'm seeing here is that it is six hundred feet from the schools, and it is a proposed school site as well, and it says, for purposes of this section, school means a public or private school providing instruction in kindergarten or grades one through twelve inclusive, but does not include any private school in which education is primarily conducted in private homes.
So, in regards to residential, instead of maybe a distance barrier, maybe a physical barrier, some kind of verbiage to alleviate the concerns of the residents that if it's gonna be there, they'll have a distance, maybe a physical barrier that the police chief or the building official wants, that would screen that from the residential neighborhoods.
And I would recommend just to avoid any sort of inconsistency that we establish a standard, if you want it to be feet, or if you want it to be a physical barrier that we describe that with specificity, because otherwise there's lots of different.
But that would be more illegal. What you guys would recommend with that?
Okay, sure, we can bring that back.
I don't have a definitive answer for that one.
No problem. And just to be clear, I'm sorry, one more clarification on the question with respect to any other fees that are imposed. You referenced the county in particular, but I would, okay, I was gonna say, I'd recommend we expand that out. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Expanding by means of state and federal?
To any, any agency that imposes any sort of fee.
There will be new agencies created because of this.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
Perfect.
Ms. Vera.
I think when we specify daycare facility, it should be an existing licensed, because a daycare facility can pop up anywhere, so we don't want these people to come in and, and put in an extravagant building and get going, and then, oh, there's a daycare next door. So, anything that's currently established there when they apply for their license, then after that, it would be up to the daycare to be more than six hundred feet away.
And one other note on that, it didn't mention preschool, it mentioned kindergarten, so I would assume you guys want preschools as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Raymond.
And, we want it to say existing?
Yes.
That way, once these businesses are established, then the schools can't come in and run them out, we won't, you know?
Sure.
Yep, I got the word existing.
Mr. Raymond.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I just wanna confirm that once we have a fee set in place with the schools, that that's when the educational fee will, will be implemented, not maybe, 'cause I know, I noticed there was some confusion and conflict, and one of the, you know, commissioners sent an email concerned, and I just wanna make sure that that's in there as well.
Yeah, actually, so, you can assess or have the developer agree to a fee for educational purposes if the school district hasn't established the program quite yet, and they don't have a price. So, that could be a provision of the development agreement if you had a business that came in prior to the school district having a, a program that they've noticed us and told us what the cost would be. So, essentially what that would be is, is a provision that says, once the school district has a program, then they will pay a fee.
Okay, and the reason why.
But, but, once the school district does start a program, and then we can do it with every new applicant, or we can do it with the development agreement, whichever.
Well, the reason why this is so important to me is because at the League of California Cities, we went to the marijuana seminar, the Prop sixty-four seminar, and they were saying, if you're not, potentially if you're not subscribing to every aspect of the business and the industry, you won't get those educational monies that are being taxed by the state. So, I just wanna make sure that we get a cut of that for the school system.
That's why, that's why we wanted to have the development agreements, because it, it basically included that as one of the provisions of a development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Creighton.
So, just to clarify on that, we have may, right now, instead of shall regarding the educational fee, but once the school district, 'cause we're getting ahead of this, we're gonna codify this, the school district needs to catch up, create a fee, we approve the school's fee, I'm, I'm asked, this is in a thought process here, so we approve the school's fee, and then we include it, it will always be in every agreement there on out.
Correct. Well, we hope to have it even before they establish it, but, but, yes.
So, we'll, it'll be a mandatory thing, once we work with the school district and hammer that out.
If I could say one thing about that, the one thing to be a little bit careful about is this is an evolving area of the law, right, constantly changing, and so, one of the ways that we talked about this afternoon within my office of how to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, but still keep us from having to come back and revise this ordinance time and time again, is to include language that says essentially that they may be required to pay a fee in the amount determined by the city council, that way you can change it if you need to, depending on the programs, right? We don't have to put a speci- a specific fee in here. But the other thing to say is, when you use language like "may be required" as opposed to "shall," if the state later comes back and says that we cannot impose this youth education fee for whatever reason, we would have to come back and change our ordinance, because then it would conflict with state law. So, by using the word "may" in the amount established by the city council, you give yourself more leeway and more power.
Okay, so for clarification, I think we haven't taken a vote on anything, but I think on that educational topic, the entire council's unanimous on that, so, okay, I just wanted that for the record.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. We will go ahead and at this time, open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item may step forward to the podium, state your name for the record, and your comments.
Evening, Zach.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the time. Uh, I just wanted to kinda give my insight on some of the recommendations that are coming out tonight, specifically related to the sensitive use setbacks. I think, Mr. Creighton, not to, not to try and put words in your mouth, but you, you mentioned either distance setbacks or physical barrier setbacks, and I think that gets to an important point, that maybe the council consider allowing a variance for particular projects in the event that a sensitive use is encroached within the objective distance, but in fact, there is a physical barrier, like another business, or a freeway, or a canal, or whatever it may be, that renders that sensitive use remote from the business operation. One of the main barriers to entry that, that operators incurred, or encountered rather, in the city of Stockton is, it had some rather stringent sensitive use setbacks, and it really limited the, the property, the real estate infrastructure that was actually available for business development in this, in this type of situation. And so, you may have properties that are appropriate for a certain use in the correct industrial zone, but, and, you know, remote from any other sensitive use, but may encroach within, you know, a few feet of the sensitive use distance. So, I understand your concerns, and the concerns for the health and safety of the public are well-placed. I would just caution that there are certain circumstances where the objective criteria are not justified by the, you know, the safety that you're trying to put into place. So, perhaps allowing variances for certain situations like that, it could kind of broaden the available property infrastructure, that's all I got, so, thank you.
Could you please state your name?
Sure, Zach Dravon, attorney, working out of the city of Stockton.
Very good.
Thank you.
Frank Johnson, Bedestow. You brought up the state trumps city, county, towns. So, I'm under the impression that the federal law has been passed legalizing marijuana, because federal law trumps state. Question. Other than that, liability? If federal law has not been passed, and a child, or an adult, or someone dies from what you license, who then takes the liability? We hear about all the money and boundaries and everything, but I have not heard nothing about the individuals, the citizens, the children. The liability behind something that the federal law still says is illegal. Is it legal in the federal courts? Question.
If you'd like to address that, Ms. Anderson, you're welcome.
I would not like to address that.
Okay, very good. We'll, we'll get that answered.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Uh, Adam Reed, fifteen twenty Fruitland Avenue. Couple things, the, the ordinance that you guys were presented with tonight, the CDRC made a recommendation on that, and the ordinance that you guys are presenting with is not the ordinance that we made the recommendation on, there was some changes to it that I brought to the city manager's attention today, so I don't know why we're making recommendations and things are coming to you guys and they're changed. So, and one of them was the youth education fee, there was a change made to that, and I understand you, you guys are discussing that and saying that we can, may not be able to do this, we may not be able to do that, the school district may not be on board, whatever, but I don't know, we don't necessar- I don't understand why it can't be "they will," not "they may." This, even if the school district falls out and they don't want, they don't wanna participate for whatever reason, I think it should be the responsibility of the city, since we're passing this and allowing this in our city, that it should be the response of the facility, the city, to implement a program. It doesn't have to be the school, it can be anything, it can be a youth organization, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Explorer, Post, anything, you know, there's a lot of different people that can, can do that, or the city can just hire a group to come in, you know, a couple times a year or something and do an educational program. So, I, I would like, I, I would ask that you guys change that to a "will," not a "may," or a "shall," not a "may." Um, and then also too, a lot of your setback concerns and stuff are dealing with how close it is to residential and churches and schools. You can alleviate a lot of that by only allowing it in industrial zones. It's isolated, it's all in one area, you don't have business park zoning scattered throughout the city. It's all isolated in one area. There's roughly a hundred and sixty acres of industrial zone in Atwater, thirty-eight of it undeveloped, a hundred and twenty-two of it developed, so I, I would think that's a lot of land and a lot of opportunity for the marijuana industry, so, but, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have come up here in the past and addressed the issue of people having and drinking alcohol at Seven-Eleven stores, you know, around the city, like at three o'clock in the afternoon, and so forth and so on. Now, we're discussing this thing here having to do with this marijuana issue, and the question that I have, is there anything that says that the city had the distribution of that substance as opposed to the citizens that apply for a license? Reason being, as you can pretty well know over the news, there's constant problems, you know, with various distributors, you know, in the Merced area. If we're gonna run into that kind of an issue, you might as well just nip it now. I think you're putting a lot of pressure, you know, on, on the, on the, on the community of the people, you know, that are gonna be subjected to having to deal with the abuse of it. On top of all of that, you, you're gonna put a lot of pressure on the PD, you know, to enforce, you know, people that are doing that. Now, most, some of us here are a little bit watchful as to what's going on in the community, and if I was to see somebody distributing, I'm not gonna stay quiet about it. But I think, I don't know if the law has it in there, you know, that, that the city itself can open up the distribution center, you know? That's something that maybe your city attorney can, can, can assess or tell us here, but I think it would be, I think it'd be a big mistake to add this substance and also not be able, not being able to do nothing about the abuse of alcohol in public areas, and I'm not talking about bars. I'm talking about Seven-Elevens around town, where I've seen them, and like I says, I've, I've addressed this before, you know, and I think needlessly, you know, all this, all this trying to confine something, you know, so that it make it available for somebody to sell it, the after-effects of things going wrong are more highly possible than, than they are, you know, for things to go in, in a smooth transition. I just don't see it. Anyway, yeah, if I could get an answer to that question about the city being able to open up its own distribution and, and, and manage it, because, you know, the cities, you're providing the PD to begin with, and keep it within the city limits, and that's all there is to it. If you wanna buy stuff, just, just get the heck out and go, go to Livingston or wherever else, and Bedestow, whatever. But around here, you know, you gotta protect your kids, and I happen to know that the high schools around here, including the grammar schools, have a certain amount of exposure to the abuse of both substances. Now, I don't know, you know, how you're gonna stop this, you know, what's going on right now, but having, having the availability, you know, to, to, to people that have no respect for the law is where the issue is at with me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this matter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'm Robert Richel, nineteen oh one Sycamore Avenue, and the issue just came up with the BP zoning, so I thought I might address how we see it. Over the last probably maybe a hundred and twenty days or so, we've had on our parcels on Sycamore Avenue inside the BP zone, which is also certainly industrial use, M-two, and in fact, Sycamore right now has numerous industrial buildings on it, so. But over the last twenty days, we've had eight, at least eight, site visits from major companies, smaller growers, larger companies, who've, some have flown in, some have driven up, so there's a little bit of excitement about, maybe not, excitement's probably not the right word, but they're doing their homework to see where they wanna be, because like any business, you gotta find out what the fees are, what, what's gonna cost me, all, the whole thing. So, um, and, so we find that exciting, but, you know, it, 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 we have to see how it's all gonna work out, 'cause you just don't know what people are gonna do and how they're gonna spend money. We get, I get this feedback all the time, so it, it's a tricky situation. Now, most of the BP zoning in Atwater, now there's some up on, as you guys probably know, I'm just gonna probably preach in the choir, but there's some up on Santa Fe, it's out there a ways, I'm not sure if there's infrastructure there for any development at this point. The other major part of BP, 'cause it's not pocketed all over, the major part is Atwater Boulevard west of the tracks where, you know, there's already major industrial produce facilities there, ninety percent of Atwater Boulevard already has industrial usage on it, which is a big part of the BP zoning. From Atwater, from Winton Way to Schaefer on Atwater Boulevard, it's almost all industrial. And then there's a, a little parcel on Schaefer and Atwater Boulevard, which was, used to be a lumberyard, I don't know what's going on there, but that's another issue. I don't know what's going on there, but that's another issue. And then there's Sycamore, which sits back away from everything, away from schools, et cetera, which the city, as you guys well know, spent hundreds, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, or at least $100,000, putting in in 1988, the infrastructure to build out Sycamore Avenue. Water, sewer, et cetera. And it's never been tapped into, there's never been a fee, nothing, no one's ever used it. So it's been sitting there as an asset to the city of Atwater and never used. So we feel that certainly that should be exploited and the infrastructure needs in that part of town. If I told you what some of the things I get when I say, well, we have property on Sycamore, where on Sycamore? Down at the end. Oh, you mean that scary part down there? So I get, we get that a lot. And, you know, I've, I've talked, yeah, I've talked, we've dealt with the chief and people, and homeless problems, and blah, blah, blah. So that's another issue down there. But in terms of the BP zoning, there's not that much large property acreage available to some of these growers. The industrial park's fantastic, there's parcels there, but they're smaller, for the most part. I think there's a six acre parcel, something available. But everything else is maybe an acre, under an acre. So they're smaller facilities. So if you want that flexibility, there needs to be ground available, and there's just, there isn't that much of it. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and give testimony to this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. With regard to Mr. Hernandez's question, it is in the ordinance, and I think if I read you correctly, you were talking about retail outlets, stores that would sell marijuana, is that correct? Is that where you were going with your question?
It's a retail office, not a cell.
Right.
What I was pointing to is the city having a district, and not everybody else.
Okay. The ordinance itself specifies that we are only allowing for, in this ordinance, for grow facility, okay? Not for dispensaries or however we want to classify that. So hopefully that answers your question on that aspect of it. Okay, Mr. Gray?
Commissioner Reed's comments. First, I have a question. It left the CDRC, which is basically our version of the, it's a hybrid planning commission, traffic, parks, it's a whole bunch of things all shoved into one. But it went through that commission and then it came to the council, but on the way to the council, it was changed. I thought that when it left one of those, that commission, that body, it was locked up till it got here, and then if we needed to make a change, we make changes. So is that true that it changed on its way here?
The only thing that might have changed was just the inclusion of all of the language on the development agreement, because we didn't have all of that language prior to the, to the CDRC meeting. But I am, I'm not, I made no other changes other than the development agreement.
And you want me to respond from our office's perspective, or for the changes?
We have a couple more comments to add, then, yes, please. Then on the comment of Commissioner Reed about shall or may, I think you answered that. I don't know if you caught that. Why? Because of the, the state may change that, so that gives us flexibility on our municipal code, but the intention of the entire council is to collect that. And just some kind of concern mainly about anything changing from that commission to us.
So I can tell you from our client, from our office's perspective, I spoke with Rosie, who's, like I said, been spearheading this, she's been at all the meetings with you guys. She did not change the may to shall, or the shall to may. Don't know when that happened, who did it, how it happened. I looked today when we got the email from Mr. Reed, and I see when it went to the CDRC, it said shall. The one I have says may. Don't know when that happened or how it happened. However, in response to that, one of the things we did was talk about what are the benefits of shall versus may, and how does that help you? And that's why we gave you the explanation we did. But in terms of who changed it, I don't know. And that was the only change that I was, when I looked at your email, that's the only thing that I saw. He said there were other changes made, but he didn't say what they were. So I'm not sure about that. But I can tell you that Rosie did tell me that there were two changes that were made. And one of the changes was that we had to put in all of, it was either the findings or the standards, which I think is what Mr. Bramble is speaking about, because we didn't have anything set out in there. So we have to have a standard by which to govern this issuance. And so that was potentially a substantive change, but not really, because I think it was talked about, that there had to be some standard set forth. And then other than that, there was one other thing, that it was not a substantive change. It was like a little word change, that it was a clarification, not substantive. So if there is some change in particular that is claiming that Mr. Reed believes that that was made, I'm happy to look at it and address it and see what it is. We just weren't provided with any insight into that other than the shall versus may.
My, my main thing, my main issue with this is the integrity of whatever the body brings to the council, that nothing changes, because.
Well, and to the extent that there was anything substantive, absolutely, you're right. If there is a substantive discussion, and this is a decision that's made, if there is going to be a change between then and here, you should be notified about it, and it should be explained to you 100%. I don't believe that that happened, other than, like I said, what I've already talked about, which I understood was part of that meeting. So I'm, I'm not, I can't address anything other than to say, you're right, you should know. And it shouldn't happen unless you know about it and you know why. I just can't address whether that happened here or not.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Raymond?
So on that same topic, this isn't the first time that's happened, where we've gotten something. How, how does that happen? Where we get something recommended from the CDC and it's changed from, by the time it gets from there here? It's always, we don't know, nobody knows, but it happens. How do we stop that?
I'm not, I have an issue with trying to address something in the abstract without a particular, if you tell me that there is a sentence or a provision that was changed, I can figure out whether it was changed, and if so, we can give you an explanation. As I said, there may be some reason that there's a word that was changed legally. There are a lot of people that touch this. This comes from my office, it goes to the city, it goes to the planning department, it goes to the city clerk's office, it goes to 100 places. I can't always answer why something's changed, because we didn't do it. And if nobody tells us about it or asks us about it, there's not much I can do, except try to figure it out and help you out and give you an explanation. If Mr. Reed wants to give me a specific provision, I can find out if there was a change made, if it was made by my office, I can give you an explanation. That's the best I can do. But other than that, all I got was a may versus a shall, and we've addressed that. She didn't change it. Somebody here changed it? We didn't do it, I don't know. I'm sorry. That's, you know, it's the best we can do.
I, I want to chime in on this. One, we don't, most of the time, we get this in a PDF form, so we don't have the ability to change it. And, and I can't speak for everybody on staff, so I'm not going to try to do that. But I can tell you that when we do have changes, at least from the perspective that I've heard from staff, we're in the process of asking the attorney whether we can change that. So I, I, I think that although there's, I mean, there can always be that exception, but I, I would hope that that not be the situation.
Question I have here is somebody that's found in violation growing outdoors, how is that going to be dealt with?
That would be a police department enforcement.
Yeah, I would, Rosemary, we just, we call our officers out there and we give them time, take it up, make sure they have a license for it, the, the, okay for it. And then we advise them on the rules on that. Advise them on the laws. And then what we do is we, if they don't take care of it in a timely manner, we go and we extract it ourselves.
Okay. And with respect to language in here, and I was a little bit, well, curious on, on the language here for police monitoring for a grow facility, we're not going to be into something similar to what we already have in dispatch, are we?
What section are you talking about, Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
On the confidential information?
Yeah, no, we're, the, the security monitoring systems. And it's, man, I don't know. Sorry.
I just wanted to be able to.
Yeah, well, any case, it, it addresses the electronic monitoring and that type of thing. That we're not going to be monitoring that within the PD, correct?
That's correct.
That's all I needed.
Actually, it will be, the provision indicates that it's available to the police department if, upon their request.
Right, okay. Mr. Raymond?
For secure building, does that also allow for like rigid struc, rigid structure greenhouses?
It can be a greenhouse, but it has to, if you, if you read early in the document, there's a provision that it has to not be penetrable. And they talk about translucent ceiling or roof, but it, it can't allow for the, the release of light. So there's a lot of protections to make sure that the buildings are not identifi, readily identifiable as, as a marijuana grow.
And that's on, starts on page 16 and goes over to page 17, and it explains all of the, the requirements for the building.
Right, I just wanted to confirm that it allows for the greenhouse.
As long as, I would say, as long as the greenhouse, as he said, meets the standards that are set in there about the penetrability and the ability to see what's going on, because the whole point is to make sure that, as Mr. Bramble was saying, that people can't see it, because that makes it an easier target and more likely to be broken into and have crime and different things like that. So we just have to meet those standards.
Correct. That's why I was asking about the rigid structure, to make sure. Thanks.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments pertaining to this matter? Okay.
So I think what, at least from my perspective, what we're looking for is a motion to send it back or direction to staff to come back and bring it in. And if there are any changes that were proposed that you don't want to make, otherwise, I wrote them all down, and we'll be making changes consistent with what you've said. Yeah, the only thing I didn't hear feedback from the council on is the suggestion about allowing for a variance and having language in the ordinance that would allow for that here. So if the council wants to give us direction to implement that language, we will, otherwise that was the suggestion. Yes, sir.
And, and maybe, and they can do that, I'm just thinking out loud that maybe the development agreement allows us to, to make that exception if they provide with barriers and architectural barriers or et cetera, and make that a part of the development agreement. Maybe we don't have to have a variance.
And, and my thought would be, as Councilmember Creighton mentioned, he talked about distance and/or other barriers, right, or other separation.
I want to make distance an issue, because potentially there's a railroad tracks, it's a physical barrier, and there's residents on the other side of the street. So that distance could kick that property out unintentionally. So when there's common sense approach is what I'm looking for.
Okay, perfect. We can do that.
Mr. Raymond?
Is it possible with all the back and forth to motion to approve with the suggested recommendations?
I don't think there's much change to, is there?
Um.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. So the changes that I have are to include language that if there are any other fees that are imposed by any agency, and those fees are imposed on the city, then the city would pass those fees through, and the operator, owner, whoever it is, whatever language we use in here, is the entity that's going to be responsible for paying those fees, not the city. The second thing I had is to include within the 600 feet barrier requirement churches, daycare facilities, which are licensed daycare facilities or preschools, and that those are existing as of the time in which, do you want to ask us the time in which this ordinance is adopted?
Yes. I think that's probably, does, does that sound right?
What are you thinking?
No, well, I am thinking about that, because say we adopt the ordinance tomorrow, and two years from now, a daycare facility goes in on W Street, and four years from now, someone applies for a license. I'm thinking that when they are applying for a license at a certain location, anything that's licensed at that time.
So existing as of the time that the license is.
Otherwise, from this day forward, or whatever day this is passed forward, someone wants to come in and be licensed six years from now? The daycare facility had to be licensed six years ago? That doesn't make any sense.
I think you're right. I think that makes sense as of the time that the application is submitted. How about that?
Yeah, that's.
Sound good? And that the council can use, will figure out the right language, some sort of common sense approach to either require the 600 foot barrier, or 600 foot distance barrier, or some other physical barrier that sufficiently separates this use from the sensitive uses in the area.
Yes.
Okay, so that is 600 feet. And then finally, just to clarify the language on the youth education fee to ensure that you have the ability to impose those fees based on whatever fees you establish.
Regardless whether the school district participates or not, is what.
Yeah, it, I think it's better to not link it to the school district because of the exact concern that was raised, is what if the school district doesn't do something, then you can still impose the fee, as long as there's a program. Now remember that we can't impose a fee if there is no program, because the fee has to be based on the cost of the program, okay? So I'm, so those are the three changes. I don't see that that's super substantive, because I really don't think that there's, I think it's just clarifying. You have to all be comfortable with that.
Okay, and as a sidebar, I got you.
Yep.
As a sidebar to that also to address the state and federal implications of the legalization, as was asked by Mr. Johnson.
I, you want that addressed in this statute?
No, 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 as a sidebar to it all.
Okay.
Just, just to come back with it.
You want us to come back with an opinion about that?
If you have some sort of, well, yes. You know, we, just to find out, you know, what the feds, how they feel about the state of California and implementing, implementing this Prop 64 stuff.
I, I think before we spend a lot of money on that, I think you can go online also, and you could do, through the Department of Justice, you could see how it goes from federal, state, county, local, and why we're doing what we're doing at a city level with the state, because we report to the state, yes, the feds trump that, but as the legislator in Sacramento passes these things, we have to scramble to keep up with it. So I hope that.
Well, I, we, we understand that, but I think I, if I understand Mr. Johnson's question correctly, he wants to know because the feds trump the state, correct? And you want to know if the feds are going to come down on us for implementing and doing stuff within. But, ah, you're right, 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 right. Okay. Clear as mud, right? Okay.
Clear as mud, it may come back in a different format.
I understand, I understand.
But I know what you're, what you're asking for.
Very good. Mr. Viny?
Question. On your statement about the distance versus the ability of the wall and giving us the flexibility, couldn't it simply by putting in there 600 feet and/or a variance thereof such as railroad?
Sure.
Make it real simple.
Yep.
Thank you. So any more suggested changes or any other comments?
Okay.
I see you're reaching, are you?
Formulating a thought.
I got you, okay. All right, so, all right, so we want to go ahead and we'll put this into a draft and...
I have another question, ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is our first go with this, we're not experts. Say we miss a few things. In the code, are we going to have additional sections? How hard is it going to be to add things that we missed? Because obviously, we're going to miss something.
Or delete.
So anytime, anytime that you want to make a change to an ordinance, you have to do so with another ordinance, which requires the first reading and introduction, second reading and adoption, and then unless there's a basis to make it an urgency... reading and adoption, and then unless there's a basis to make it an urgency ordinance, then it would take effect thirty days later.
So I need just clarification, this isn't the perfect scenario, perfect ordinance, this is the best that we're going to get right now today?
This is my understanding that you guys have had multiple meetings over the last nine months about this issue with CDRC meetings, joint commission council meetings, and that the input has been given, and that this is where you guys want it as of the current state of the law today. That's my understanding.
Correct.
And you can change that if you need to, but it will have to be pursuant to another ordinance.
But I just want to make sure people are aware that this may not be the perfect version today.
Mr., I was all ready to push you, but geez. Mr. Vineyard.
Motion to approve, to put it back, all the, to approve the suggested changes, put them back in the draft form or bring it back as soon as possible.
Okay. I'll second that. Mr. Raymond.
Okay, so that would be bringing it back as another draft ordinance without the approval?
With, with the suggested changes. And bring back for our approval, is that what I heard?
Correct.
And, or.
Theoretically, could we approve it with the suggested changes tonight instead of keeping, kicking the can?
Well, I don't think we're kicking, I think, I agree with Mr. Creighton on this. You know, if we leave here tonight and then we, geez, I forgot to go and bring up X, something like that. I think with the way the motion has been made, I think that's the safest way to go. And then when we bring it back, say at the next council meeting for discussion and approval or action, if we don't have anything else, then that's it, that's D-Day. Okay.
So, question for the city attorney, since, since they're bringing it back, do we have to hold another public hearing and have a notice?
Yeah, so if this motion passes, then it would have to come back as another first reading and introduction. As far as whether you would have to publish again, I'd have to look at that, but it would be brought back as another first reading and introduction.
So could the mayor and the council continue this public hearing to the next meeting? To avoid the cost?
I believe so.
And I'll amend my motion to include that we continue it in order to save the city some money.
Okay.
And that would be to the next meeting, which is the twenty fifth, or the twenty third.
Twenty third.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Okay, Mr. Raymond.
So my question again would be, so now, it would be thirty days after the final reading and approval that it would go into effect, which would be January or February? Because we only have one meeting in November, one meeting in December.
Well, hopefully, if you approve it at the twenty thirds meeting, you can have second reading in November, then it's thirty days. We have a lot of fees that we have to put together between now and the first of the year, so now that we pretty much have an idea of what you're looking for, staff will start on preparing the resolutions of, on the fees immediately, so we can have those in front of you, I'm hoping by the second, or the meeting in November, but worst case scenario would be the meeting in December.
Okay, I just want to beat the state before they come in and impose.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We want to beat the state before they beat us.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Creighton.
So to clarify what Mr. Vineyard's saying, this is going to be back, second meeting, the what?
Twenty third.
Twenty thirds, and we're going to wrap this up on the twenty third, hopefully.
It would be back though for first reading and introduction, not second reading and adoption, is the way it's on the motion right now.
Back to what staff was saying, if we approved it tonight with those modifications at the second reading, we would be still, we would see the changes, and we'd be able to continue.
You would, if you were not to pass this motion right now, and if a motion was made to approve it for first reading and introduction with the changes that have been proposed today, it would come back on the twenty third for second reading and adoption, and would go into effect thirty days thereafter, so it'd go into effect in November.
Showing those changes.
Showing those changes. The changes will come back at the twenty third meeting.
Okay, so that's where I'm headed with this, but we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
No, that's easy to take care of, I rescind my motion.
Make a motion to approve with the changes.
I'll second that.
Heard the discussion? Off the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
How about that, folks?
Save some money.
Next item.
Next item, waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 990, amending chapter five dot five four fireworks of Title V, business taxes, licenses, and regulations of the Atwater Municipal Code.
Mr. Mayor and council, after a rather noisy and boisterous Fourth of July that was experienced in the city of Atwater, the city council requested that the staff review the city's ordinance and try to add some deterrent features on the use of illegal fireworks in the future. To that end, the police department, the fire department, and the city attorney's office have spent quite a bit of time looking at our ordinance, trying to put as many factors into our ordinance that would, would accomplish the city council's goals. And I'm going to turn this over to our fire marshal, James Mitch, to give you a rundown of what's in the ordinance and what we've been able to accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Bramble, mayor, city council, public. Basically, the last time that this ordinance, or this municipal code, chapter five point five four was amended was two thousand and seven, and as the manager, or the city manager said, it was needed to be amended and improved. Things that we have, we basically gave you bullet point items, and we can go over those if you like, but they would be in your packet on page one thirty eight, and it basically was section by section, what we added, what we changed, and how it's changed. But for generality, basically, we've amended the code to add definitions, violations, different possession articles, adding enforcement, and adding cost recovery to those. If you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Are there any questions from the council? Or, Mr. Creighton?
For next Fourth of July, so how are we getting to implement this next year? Twenty eighteen for Fourth of July, what are we going to do different as a physical thing? What are you guys going to do out in the field?
Specifically for me, I was going to work with the police chief and basically create an educational environment where we can actually include the officers in one of their shift changes and tell them how the, the ordinance will change the chapter and how they can basically now write citations, enforce activity, and basically go through the cost recovery, all the way through cost recovery, and basically get that money back for the state, the city of California.
Okay, so.
City of Atwater.
I want to make sure that we do, the most important thing of this, is Fourth of July's the best time of the year, it's good barbecue, we're celebrating our country, that I want to make sure we do an education component in this at the fireworks stands, that maybe we have our ordinance there or something that we could post it on each stand. We need to educate them, if we can educate them, you know, we could deter quite a bit of this. So I'd like to see some type of, I don't know what you need to do tonight or whatever, you don't have to answer that, but I'd like you to work with the chief with the educational component, maybe some PSAs, the newspaper, and a few other things along with those fireworks stands and the organizers of those stands to educate everybody what we're doing, so that, I think we could invite people to go somewhere else and raise heck.
I agree with you, I think that's a great idea, and I know that as we do with the inspections for each fireworks stand, I can be part of that as well as maybe a police officer for code enforcement.
Yeah, and I, I just want to educate, I don't want to make the Fourth of July a downer for anybody, I want to make it a great event here in Atwater.
Yeah, our intention is to make it a safe holiday.
Yep.
Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, about ninety-five percent of the fireworks are illegal that we see that aren't sold at the stands. In the past, I know the state and local agencies have banded together to form task force to make, to go after those people who are lighting illegals, the ones that leave the ground, scare the animals, scare people, break windows, everything, start fires. So is there going to be a process where you're going to try to implement that again?
Yeah, I would like to work with CalFire, we did this last year, we had six officers in the city, and then we'll work with, of course, the police department to integrate those officers with them so that we have basically a team effort going forward, and I'll try and work to do that again.
Okay, I would also like to suggest not just your six officers that you have, but possibly make a request through the state for additional officers. I know everybody has the same problem throughout the state, but if, if we don't start somewhere in any city, anywhere, then it's, it's costs us more in the long run. So, you know, if we work here, say in this city this year, Merced next year, Livingston next year, and move it around so they don't know who it is, and then move it even through to help out in other places in the state, but get statewide help.
I agree with you.
Get as large a task force as possible. I've seen it get worse and worse and worse every year because we don't have that ability anymore because of budget cuts.
I will definitely make that request and see what we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond.
I agree with Councilman Vineyard, but also just for informational purposes, the fireworks vendors, we met against the League of California Cities, say that Clovis has a very good operation, and that's something we might want to look at, see about implementing.
Okay, yeah, I.
Thank you.
I agree, this last year was pretty horrific, and I, you know, the illegal stuff is, is what makes it bad for all of us. So, I don't know, it's, it was, the enormity of it, this last Fourth of July was, was more than I've ever seen anyhow. So hopefully, we can do something with this and with staffing and what have you, as has been discussed, maybe we can get a handle on this and at least put some sting to this somewhere down the line. But in any case, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak to this, please step forward to the podium and state your name and testimony. Okay.
In the neighborhood where I'm at, there was a heck of a bad fire there, you know, and the, there's a, there's a couple of people that are suspect as far as that goes from the neighborhood, right there on Canal. And I understand that these guys were firing up these illegal fireworks during the course of a couple of days prior to the Fourth. From my standpoint, if you got a, if you have the Atwater PD go out there, or a police officer, sheriff, or whatever, you know, they're, they're going to stop. There's just no two ways around it. And my thinking is, to stop this kind of illegal firework displays, you know, that are destroying property, I think you need to have, sort of like you have your Atwater volunteer police officers that are in uniform, patrolling the streets in the daytime and, you know. But I think if you have or implement a, a small force of those citizens that are interested in curtailing this kind of fireworks display, to be out there at nighttime, you know, more or less in the mode of a detective, not necessarily to enforce, but to be able to witness, and at the moment that it happens, you, you advise a PD and you can come out there, they can come out there and, you know, make an arrest on, on a person like that. There's a lot of individuals, I know they go out of state to get this stuff, you know, and you can't, you can't stop them coming into the city limits, because then you have to stop every doggone body gum coming in. But it seems to me that the only solution there is, is to have a small body of volunteers that would be able to go to a location where you're getting a complaint of firecrackers going off of that type. And once you get that complaint, then you can go ahead and assign somebody to that area in the proximity until you see somebody, something go off. And at that stage, you know, then you got a witness, and you can probably even have the person that is doing it. There's just no other way around it. You got two houses that were destroyed right there on Fay, this last Fourth of July here, and I don't know how many other ones in the city. And this is not going to get any better because the accessibility coming out of the areas where you sell this stuff, you know, is, is becoming more and more the practice of those people, you know, that don't have no regard for the safety of others. So I just, you know, I don't know, you know, to me, this Fourth of July, like you said, you know, it was really horrendous, left a couple of people homeless, they're having to rebuild their houses completely. And so I think you, you got, you got to do something. And for me, you know, it's, I already, I'm already scoping out how in the hell I'm going to get things done in my neighborhood, I can tell you that much. Now, I don't, you know, I don't know about everybody else, you know, in the area, you know, or outside of the, the city limits of Atwater, not necessarily outside, but in other areas of Atwater, how they're, how they're planning on, on doing something about that, that problem. But I think there is a solution, and I don't know of any other one than just the one, than the one that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Don Hyler, and I have recused myself as your city clerk for the time being. This issue is very important to me, having been involved in fireworks sales with my father for over thirty years. We have run as many as five fireworks stands before that was, while that was available to us at the time through our church. And just, I, I've never recused myself and spoke, but this is an issue very near and dear to me. Most, you know, all of your organizations that are selling, they're all not, not for profit. And Mr. Creighton brought up an issue of public education at the fireworks stands. Most of your, of your organizations are extremely understaffed and overregulated as it is already. I, I would like to see, I, I recognize that we do need education, but I don't think putting it on the fireworks stands and organizations is the place to, to put it. They're doing everything they can do just to sell most of the time. And in addressing Mr. Hernandez's comments, people are not having to go out of state. The bicycle ice cream man in Wynton sells them right out of his, right out of his little deal. So you can get all the illegal fireworks you want, as close as you want. The bottom line is, is this is about making something that is illegal go away. If we had enough staff, the, the police department already has an ordinance, and they already have, they just don't have the staff to enforce it. And so I think we've got, we've got to address the staffing issue, and I, and I totally agree, we need to update the ordinance, but the bottom line is, you can put everything on paper you want, but until you get the force and the, and the bodies to be able to enforce this, you're, you're kind of in a, in a bad spot. So my point in all of this is, is I really would like to see the fire department really enhance what they're, what they're working with, more than six officers going to be necessary, and just a suggestion that perhaps instead of focusing on an entire city and trying to knock out this problem, maybe focus on an area. This year, we're going to focus on this quadrant, next year, we're going to focus on this quadrant, we're going to knock it out. You're not going to knock it out the entire city, but if you can start eliminating it area by area, you might get a jump on it. So anyways, but I would hope that you wouldn't put any more regulation on the sellers. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Lisa Rasmussen, 106 Laurel Avenue, Atwater, California. And as a past member of this body, and someone who spent a lot of time on planning commission, and someone who spent fifteen years with a nonprofit organization selling fireworks in the city of. and someone who spent fifteen years with a nonprofit organization selling fireworks in the city of Atwater, which was, to be honest about it, was our biggest revenue source for the year for our activities. I don't know if they're still doing it, Don, but the vendors who provide the quote unquote "safe and sane" fireworks to the stands would deliver to us massive reams of sheets that were safety statements that every time we handed out a, a, a box, or every time we handed out a bag, they also got a sheet that told them how to handle, what to do, what not to do with regard to those fireworks. Now, I realize that only addresses the safe and sane kind of fireworks, and we know our bigger problem is the stuff that goes fifty feet in the air. But there are people who are not safe with the safe and sane as well. So I think I hear you clearly about the issue being safety. My, my real concern to echo what our city clerk said is that I am probably more keenly aware than most about the staffing levels for our police department and what they already have to do. I, I disagree with Mr. Hernandez, I believe, in what I thought I heard him leaning toward about what he was gonna do in his neighborhood. I would just strongly, strongly urge anyone listening, don't create your own vigilante force when it comes to fireworks, because then I believe PD is going to be responding to something bigger and much more difficult than just the illegal fireworks issue. I am in total support of the ordinance as presented, and I would urge the council to please adopt it and take advantage of the joint efforts of CAL FIRE and of our Atwater PD to address the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else wishing to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, I just want to kind of combine everything everybody's said. Because it's twenty, about eighteen years of law enforcement dealing with fireworks. There, there hasn't been the teeth that needs to be. There are, it is true, people misuse safe and sane. The education process is there. It can always be strengthened. It can always been improved. As far as the public doing their own thing, we do that now with, with Neighborhood Watch. We do it now, we have people, as Mr. Hernandez said, lighting things off early. They still light things off now, way after the time they're supposed to do it. And it's the people, when I go out, to look to see where it came from after it goes off. There's people walking and they go, oh, it came from that house. Okay, well, we need to report it. Okay, I'll report it. So people are already out there walking around and doing it. They don't actually have to go do a physical confrontation. They don't have to do it in a large group. Being aware of where it's coming and having, being willing to report it. Don't have to give your name. You can be anonymous, I'm sure, but be willing to report it. And then we do have to work on staffing, and that's the whole premise behind a task force, is bringing in as many officers and split the city up in four districts. We have four districts, are gonna have four districts. You could do that. You can't, you're not gonna eradicate it all in one year. It may take ten years. But as soon as the word gets out that there's gonna be law enforcement and they don't know where you're gonna be, it will curtail it, so I do believe. So, thank you.
Ms. Vera.
I know it says in here that there's a possible increase in enforcement costs, possible full recovery of enforcement costs, possible increase in permitting fees, how about not, but not less than $1,000. So hit 'em in the pocketbook. So if you're gonna go and buy the illegal fireworks when you get caught, you're gonna pay $1,000. Not $150, not 25 bucks. So people, if you get caught with illegal fireworks, you're gonna get a ticket, it's gonna be $1,000. Not less than. And if you burn someone's house down, it's gonna be a lot more than that. But I would say we could make, if you hit people in the pocketbook, that's, that's where we're gonna change things. So that would be my suggestion.
I agree. Okay. Okay, council, so.
Yeah, Brian says we can attach it to their water bill.
Ms. Vera, I just wanted to make sure I addressed one thing with one of the sections that we added. Just so you're aware, it actually is a $500, and if we need to change that, we can, but right now we're citing state code for the fireworks. And what it is, is the first violation's 500, the second violation's 1,000, and any violation after that, even in the same night, is 1,000 each. And that's currently what's in the ordinance.
And that's also in addition to being convicted of a misdemeanor?
Correct.
As well, so.
Alrighty, so. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Vineyard.
Motion to waive the first reading, introduce ordinance 990, amending chapter 5.54 fireworks at Title V.
Is there a second?
A second.
For the comment? Come up with a question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Absolutely.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, appealing the decision of the Community Development and Resources Commission to deny issuance of conditional use permit number 549-17, 1485 Broadway Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council, I'm putting on my planner hat for a minute, which doesn't always fit, but. So you, you understand what we're dealing with, which is the appeal of, of a decision denying the, the conditional use permit for a business located at 1485 Broadway. The purpose here is, is for the city council to hear the appeal from the business owner of the ninety, eighty-nine cent store requesting a type two, twenty beer and wine permit and determine whether there is a public convenience and necessity need for such alcohol license. CDRC heard the request at their September twentieth, 2017 meeting and moved for denial. The applicant, as of October third, has appealed that decision directly to the city council. Just some data, the census tract 7.01 has ten alcohol and beverage licenses, which is considered by the Alcohol and Beverage Commission to be an undue concentration of alcohol permits. So census tract 701, its boundaries are Highway 99 on the south, Winton Way on the west, Schaefer on the east, and Juniper on the north, and has a population of almost 3,200 individuals. Presently, the ten licenses are divided between five onsite sales and five offsite sales. ABC allows two of each within a census tract, so obviously we're well over that. In the same complex, there is one on sale license for a bar and one off sale license for a liquor store. So the appeal is before you. If the, depending on which action you take, either approval or denial, then the city council needs to make your decision based upon the public convenience and necessity and list the findings that need to be articulated for either decision. I will just tell you that the business is located in a commercial, central commercial zone. It is consistent with the general plan and would potentially meet the public convenience and necessity standard. That'll stop and you can hear from the applicant and then the public hearing.
Okay, any other comments from the council at this point? Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Please state your name for the record and your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and everybody present in this room. My name is Raj Randhawa, and my brother Gary is sitting back there. We own a small business located at 1485 Broadway Avenue. And we applied for the conditional use permit in September twentieth meeting, which was denied by the commission. So my request, if you, did you get that? And this is the, Laurie gonna give you that paper from the ABC, census tract 7.01, considering the concentration of the license in that zoning. So my application is for type twenty license, which is beer and wine only, not the hard liquor. So if we see all, out of these ten license on these two pages, there are only three type twenty license. And first one is RN Market, which is a supermarket and big grocery store. And the second one is Circle K, which is a gas station. And the third type twenty owned by a shell, which is on Delville, I mean, sorry, on Winton Way, and that's also a gas station. So that has nothing to do comparing with us. There have, there are different clientele, like gas stations and supermarkets, they have own clientele. Whereas twenty-one license, there is one in our shopping center, which is a Bernie's Liquors. And there is another twenty-one, which is Shorestop, also a gas station. So the reason, and the rest, others are on sale premises, like bar and restaurants. And there is also, if you see, there is also a, a small party hall, like people rent the hall and do the party or occasions. And they have a license that is also considered in this, which is not usually a license to sell beer or wine or anything. It's just people go there and they have to have a license over there. So the reason for my application was, if you consider impact on our business, we've been doing this business since 2000, and we never had a need of applying this license. Now considering in the market, our business is eighty-nine cent plus store, which is very small item store, and we were living off that store. And now in city of Atwater, there are two big Dollar Tree store, which took all our business. There is a big ninety-nine cent store in the, which used to be a Lucky's or Seymour store that time. Now there's a big ninety-nine cent store that wiped up all our business. So now we, and then there is a Walmart, there is a Target, and all those big stores. And stores like us, like a mom and pop store, has no sale, nothing, and we lost all our business. So bringing this license is not gonna, is not for that, that is gonna be over concentration in that area. If you already looked at, most of the licenses are on sale premises, which is like considering restaurant, bar, and pizzas and all those places. So my request for everybody is here that please protect our business. Give us like, hope that customers are gonna come to my store and buy something from my store. Right now, we are on the verge that we might have to close the business. We bought this shopping place last year, and there was an empty space in that shopping center, which used to be a Bertelli drugstore. And that building was vacant for a year and a half, and nobody was coming to rent that place. It's a forty-six hundred square foot building, which I rented for forty-three cents per square foot, $4,200, just to meet our expense to, we were desperate, so we just say, okay, $2,000, yeah, take the building. So considering that, that we have no sales left in the business, every, all the big stores around here, you see Seymour, Target, everybody has beer. So if we bring beer in this business, it's not gonna hurt the city of Atwater. And we checked with the ABC, and they okay with this license. And they said it's, you have to get a permission from the city, and then we okay, we don't mind about this license. So please, this is our request that considering that our business is going down, we might end up closing the doors and have another big empty building in the downtown area. And if we can afford anything, we might have to foreclose our shopping center place too, because we cannot afford to pay our mortgage and all that. So please protect the small business also. This is the request. And right, if you see on the September twentieth meeting, ninety-nine cent store, which is the biggest dollar store around this area, they even applied for beer license. So you can tell how people, how the business is so competitive market, they bring, try to bring customer in. And this ninety-nine cent store is, if you, you probably don't know, and because we were buying stuff from them, and they have biggest wholesale in Los Angeles, bargain wholesale. They are the owner of the bargains wholesale, and where all the mom and pop store go there and buy stuff and bring and sell. Now they opened up all these big retail ninety-nine cent store chain. So basically considering my store eighty-nine cent, they wiped all the business. Two Dollar Tree, one ninety-nine cent store, and I have no say. So I'm in a verge, at the moment that, at this age, I don't think I can go and make another place for living. And this is my living place. We make earning from this place, which has gone down considerably low. And the question last time the meeting had, and they had this concentration of the license. If you can please take care, look carefully of all these, you will find out how many restaurant licenses are in this included. And only type three, three type twenty license are in this. Type twenty, twenty-one license is a hard liquor license, which has no comparison with type twenty and type twenty-one license. So my request for everybody here, please protect the small business also. We are resident of this town for a long, long time. We spend a lot of time here, made our living from this town. And now we in a, I have two kids, to sport, to go to school. If my business shut down, it's gonna be very, very tough on our family. So please consider my request. Bringing one license in this zoning is not gonna hurt the city, is not gonna bring the crime to the areas. You already know that. There is, all this downtown area, the big empty building probably will bring more crime in there. People will break in and start living in it and homeless and all that. So please consider that. My request that all these stores like Target, Walmart, grocery store, everybody has beer license. And ninety-nine cent store applied for beer license. So please consider my application, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, I would like to thank you guys, giving me an opportunity to address this issue. My name is Nishan Singh, owner of Bernie's Liquor, 1491 Broadway Avenue, Atwater. Okay, I see that Mr. Raj, he applied for a conditional juice permit. And when I was looking at it, I was like, oh my gosh, what's going on here? We are in the same shopping center. We are right next door to each other. We have a twenty-one license, beer, wine, and whiskey, whatever, liquor. Right next to us, there is a gas station, Shell, then there is Ole Market, Maxmart, Bobby's New Corner that's coming up. Then there is a Shorestop. Between two hundred yards of each of us, there is a, either type twenty or twenty-one. I mean, how we gonna survive with this? Then secondly, Mr. Raj, he just addressed that it's just an eighty-nine cent store and he doesn't have any revenue. Their store and my store, our main revenue is check cashing. And ask him that how much check cashing is he doing? If he doesn't, is he not willing to, I'm willing to, I can show you my reports and stuff. That's where we make a living. Beer, wine, there is, we don't make any living off of it, just to draw the customers in. Secondly, for how long we have that ninety-nine cent store or Dollar Tree? Five, six years probably? He wasn't hurting back then. And last year, he bought that whole shopping center for some million dollars. Where did he get that money from? From the eighty-nine cent store. So there is no need, we do not need any more licenses, either twenty or twenty-one, in that particular zoning. If it's like four, five, six blocks away down the road where city can get some revenue from the taxes, yes, I'm willing to do it, no problem. But right next door to each other, come on, I don't see any, any sense. Well, other than that, that's about it. I don't see any issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this issue? Sir, I'm sorry, you've, you stated your case very eloquently.
You know, my, there's an answer for his question, that's mine.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Thank you.
My friend Nishan Singh mentioned about the next door competition. That is true. There is next door, but his license is type 21, my license is type 20. Considering the check cashing and buying the million dollar property, I've been doing business for a long time, that's why I'm requesting that. The check cashing, he bought business a year and a half ago, came from Livingston and bought the business. And before that, their store was not doing the check cashing and they started doing check cashing. And they wiped also my revenue from that part also. So right now, there is, if you, most of the probably don't even know where is 89 cent store. You have not even seen it. So it's just a matter of bringing the customer in the business. And so they start saying, okay, this is the stuff, this is the stuff. So it's not like that Mr. Nishan Singh saying that I have a million dollar. If I would have a million dollar, I wouldn't be standing here and requesting and begging for this license.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this matter?
I hear that again. We got enough alcohol distributors in town in that particular area or any other area here in the city. You know, I, I don't see any reason why you need to have one more business that's gonna be accessible. You know, for these citizens, you know, that by and large, those that go to Save Mart or these other big stores that they're talking about, they generally just take it home. At these little, at these little businesses, you know, hey, like I said before, they just go out there on the sidewalk and start drinking it. So I think you just need to eliminate, you know, the number of these outlets, you know, period. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the counsel on this matter? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the counsel. Mr. Creighton?
Reading the, the document here, it says staff's recommendation, granting the appeal to overturn the decision of the Community Development and Community Resources Commission. Why would, why would it go to the CDRC? They make their ruling and then on its way to counsel, staff recommends overturn what the CDRC worked on and do this. How does, how does that happen?
Actually, we, we recommended you either.
Mr. Bramble.
Either way, so it's, it's not.
Yeah, but I would like to respond to one thing, if I could, sorry. One of the things that happened that evening, there were three. First of all, staff recommended at the CDRC that all three of the applications be approved. There were three applications for the same thing, for alcohol licenses. Two of the applications were approved. And then this one came up and the CDRC denied the application, but did not articulate reasons for that denial. So without justification for why the denial was made by the CDRC, we bring that back to you with the original recommendation for staff. So that's why it's not a change in staff's position, it's the same position staff took at the original. Sorry, I just want to clarify, because there was, there's no minutes or anything that you got, because the minutes don't reflect all of that. So we're giving you the same recommendation that staff had at the original CDRC hearing, which is to grant the request.
So they, they denied it, so it bypasses them since there was no grounds for the denial?
It doesn't bypass them, it comes to you on an appeal.
On appeal.
Yeah, so what happened is the CDRC said they denied the conditional use permit and did not make the finding of public necessity, because there are two things that were requested. And because there wasn't a reason or reasons that were articulated as to which findings could not be made, staff is coming to with the same original recommendation, because it was appealed by the applicant. They're appealing the denial and asking you to overturn that. You have the ability to either uphold the decision of the CDRC. And if you're going to do that, we need you to articulate the findings as to why you're not going to make that. The, why you're not going to grant the appeal. Otherwise, you have the ability to overturn what the CDRC did and make the required findings to grant the request. So either way, we just need some findings. And we went with staff at this point, went with the original recommendation of staff at the CDRC.
Okay, because I was confused and now it's very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I'm just a country bumpkin. Grew up in Mariposa. They have the same stipulations, they have a certain amount of licenses for the county. And if somebody wants to open up and get a liquor license, they have to find somebody willing to sell them their liquor license. Now, I don't know if this was seen at the CDRC or not, I can't answer that. But number three says it's been surrendered, which means there's only nine licenses now in operation. So. Whether that can be changed from a 21 to a 20, I don't know, that's, that would have to be given by the state. And whether they can purchase it would be something between them and the person that surrendered it. It's on the list that they gave us, so it's number three. And it says surrendered, at least I'm presuming that's what the S-R-E-N-D means.
Right, well, actually, it's in the appeal letter that we received. And it's item number B, 1B. And it was at 1120 First Street, Atwater.
I would just clarify that, and Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but the representation that was made to the staff was that there was a type 20 license that is being purchased, is that right, Lori? Yes, so that the applicant is purchasing a type 20 license from someone else and needs to apply to the ABC for approval of issuance of that type 20 license.
Somebody else within the city limits, sir?
Is it within the city limits?
Yes, it is within the city, and then if you see that item I mentioned, there's a license for it.
Which is a type 21, though, not a type 20.
Higher license, not the lower. I'm buying the lower license. And most of the licenses here, all capital, are bar and restaurants.
Well, that's why I'm trying to find out, are you buying the one that says surrendered?
No. No, sir, I'm buying from somebody else, which is 20. The surrender license is 21, which is higher, which is like alcohol.
I understand that.
Beer, wine, plus hard liquor, mine is just a beer and wine.
So what you're saying is you can't reduce the 21 to a 20?
You cannot, but I'm buying the lower license, not the 20.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm asking, so, thank you.
Be out of order, Adam, but go ahead, you know, because my question is, why was there a denial at the CDRC? And I don't really see good clarification of that.
One thing also to take into consideration, since all this information is coming up, is Bobby's Liquor on Fifth and Atwater Boulevard was approved for a type 20 by the commission, it's not on that list yet. So that may be something else to take into consideration.
Okay, thanks. This is Vera.
That, well, that makes a lot more sense, so I'm a little confused, I just need some clarification. We are allowed 10 license in the city of Atwater?
Well, actually.
I mean, that's what is recommended.
Not in the city, but in, in.
In this area.
Census tracks.
Okay.
And basically, it's not allowed 10. It's, under the ABC, it's, it's four. Two on sale, two off sale. But if the city council makes a determination of public convenience and necessity, then you can go over that amount.
He's actually purchasing another license that's, that's already being utilized within the city.
Within the county.
Within the county, okay, okay. And it's not in the city?
It's part of the city, city already has one certain license, which I'm, you know, said.
Okay. And just to be clear, the way that the statutes are written, this is a complicated subject, so there's, the questions are understandable. And it, so the way that the California Business and Professions Code is written is to specify what an undue concentration of licenses is. And that is what City Manager Bramble is explaining to you, that according to the numbers and the math, we have an undue concentration under the statute. But, but the statute says is, with respect to a retail license such as this, then regardless of the fact that there is an undue concentration, that this governing body has the ability, if it wants, to determine that the public, the public convenience or necessity would be served by issuance of the license. Don't have to, that's within your discretion. If you don't do that, the applicant can still go forward and the applicant can try to prove to ABC that the public convenience or necessity would be served. So that's why we have two things before the council this evening. The first is issuance of a conditional use permit to allow him to sell alcohol if, to let him sell beer and wine, if ABC grants him the license. Because it's a two-step process, as he said, ABC required him to get approval from the city. In order for the city to give him that approval, we would do so pursuant to a conditional use permit. So that's one step. If you allow him to have the conditional use permit, then he has the ability to go to ABC and apply for a license. On top of that, you have a decision to make to say whether or not you believe the public convenience and necessity, or public convenience or necessity would be met by issuance of this license. If you choose not to do that, second step, he can still go forward as long as, he can still go forward and make that appeal to the ABC on his own, as long as you have agreed to issue the conditional use permit. So it's a two-step process in front of you tonight.
Just, just to answer your question, if the city will not allow me, then ABC will not. Just to clear that. Without this bidding, there, there will not, there will not. So that's why I'm there, this one is, I think, protecting my business.
Adam, what was the basis for the denial, do you specifically?
We didn't cite anything, but my reason for voting no on it was an oversaturation concentration in that district. And the fact that we had just approved, I think, two months before Bobby's to sell a type 20.
Atwater Boulevard?
Atwater Boulevard and Fifth, which is a block away essentially.
Okay. Mr. Raymond?
So if we were to uphold the CDRC's position on this and the recommendation, so we would have to cite the reasons, why?
You are supposed to, if you're going to deny someone a conditional use permit, you need to cite the reasons of what findings you cannot make. So what we did, when, if you look at the, the first resolution, it starts on page 175, it says the city council makes the following findings, and there are eight findings.
Correct.
So if you were not going to adopt this resolution and issue the conditional use permit, you should say which finding you cannot make. And then we would insert that into the resolution that starts on page 177, because as you can see in the denial resolution, there are blanks, because we need the reasons just to cite. And then he can decide where to go from there.
I mean, it's, it's tough to do without having all the information in front of us. You know, just learning some of this tonight is ridiculous. And it just goes to prove my point that things are broken here. And I think that we need more time to do this.
And I will let you know that we've had discussions with staff about trying to ensure that this will not happen again. This again does not fall with your city attorney's office, but we are all working as a team here to make sure that you have all of the information that you can. And we will, you know, try to help you out with that.
Nobody's going in the city attorney's office.
I'm just letting you.
So I'm letting you know that as well.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the counsel on this one? This is Vera.
Well, I myself am very lost. I mean, again, I just don't, it's hard when we have a committee, the CDRC, to go and make these recommendations. And we don't know why, so it's, it's, I feel like we're kind of picking up in the middle and, you know, I understand the gentlemen that have put in the application, that it, that it's very important. And I want to make sure that myself, I make a very educated decision. But then again, I can't just make a decision based on sympathy, because I do sympathize where you're at. But I can't make a decision based on sympathy, so I would like more time to go back and be able to learn a little bit more about the ABC rules and kind of just not jump in here and, and shoot from the hip on this. So is there any way we can bring this back at the next council meeting, so we can have a little more time? Or does it have to be decided tonight?
Yeah, you don't have to make a decision this evening, but two things. I would want to make sure that we can provide you, as Councilmember Raymond said, he doesn't feel like he's had the information that he needs. I would want to make sure that you guys have, and you too, whatever information you need, that either staff can bring back to you here or you can direct staff to bring it back to the CDRC. But I think at this point, I think that the council is in the best position to make the decision. But if you let us know what other information you need, we can do our best to get that to you, so that you can make an informed decision.
So some of the, some of the information. Some of the information, I, I think I could even just do some research myself. But I'm completely admittedly ignorant about the ABC rules and regulations. So I didn't know, know the difference between the 20, the 21, 21 was surrendered. Another one's, I, I just would like a little more time to make a thoughtful and educated decision. So I don't know right now what I need from you, because I, I don't even know what I, what I need at this point. So can I get in touch with you and say?
Absolutely.
Hey, can you help me with this? I feel like tonight, it would just simply be a decision made on, on empathy and that's not really the right, the right reason to make decisions.
What are your projected sales that, do you have any? Yes.
At this point, our sales is about 24,000 per month.
Today, as you, as you're doing business today?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and if this is added to your store, what would those projected sales be?
Projected sales gonna be easily back to what I used to do, about 50,000, close to 50,000.
From beer and wine sales?
Yeah, what, what does it, bring customer in. They buy beer, even though beer is not big margin, it's like 15, 16 percent.
So they buy one thing, then they buy typically buy.
Right now, they have no reason to come to my store.
I understand, okay.
That's what the main thing.
Okay, that answers my, I, I would like to have seen better information from CDRC. That, that bothers me too. Can we just continue the public hearing on this? Is that appropriate?
You can continue the public hearing. Again, what we would just want to do is make sure that if it, when it, when it comes back to you at the next meeting, that we get you whatever information you need in sufficient time to make sure that we can revise any staff reports or revise the resolution appropriately. And just for everybody's knowledge, we have to have everything in the week before the hearing, the Monday before the hearing. That's when all of our reports and everything are due. So it gives you a little bit of time. One of the things that you could do, I think, may help you, Mr. Mayor, is, I believe Lori has a tape of the meeting. You could listen to the meeting and hear that, that may help. From my understanding, as Commissioner Reed indicated, there was no reason articulated as far as why the decision was being made in particular, so that, but you would at least get the benefit of the discussion to, to give you the context.
Okay. Mr. Raymond?
Mr. Mayor, one of the gentleman in the audience wanted to come back up, since we let the others.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, go ahead.
It was just regarding Mr. Raj's discussion, he said that his projected sale is 24,000. And after he has a beer and wine, he's, he can go up to 50,000. Where is he gonna drive that income from? He's gonna drive that income from my store, because we are right next door to each other. You know, so basically, he just mentioned that he has two kids. And on the other hand, believe me, I have three kids, seven-year-old, twins, year and a half. And my brother is a partner, he has two kids. We are like. We are like eight member of family that, you know, relying on this business. So if he's putting his business right next to mine, he's having a license 20 right next to mine, he's going to draw my customers. So it's going to be, that's going to be a price war, that's going to be a big, I...
I get it.
You know what I mean? I really don't want to say it, but yes, it's going to be a big issue. So, I don't know, please get this considered, you know, because there is, if you could just drive around and see how many stores are in that little, I would say, 400 square feet, you'll see how many are there, all around. I don't see if there is any necessity to put another license.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Pleasure of the council, because I'm lost in this one, too.
Well, somehow, we need to get this back to, I guess, the 23rd. So that gives us all a week before we need to get it back to you, so a week from today, so we can do our research, listen to tapes, and kind of, I think, get a grip as to where we're at.
So continuance of the public hearing. Okay. Okay, so that'll be the motion.
So I make that motion.
Okay. And I'll second it. Okay? Any further discussion?
Get that guy.
I'm glad somebody did.
City made a motion or something.
Okay, call for the question. Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, gentlemen, we'll be back and do it again. 23rd.
City Council Matters. City Council Comments.
Mr. Raymond?
Just want to thank everybody. We had a great turnout for the city-county dinner. It was Atwater's first one in a number of years. Everyone that helped out, from the fire department cooking, Lori and Sandy, Margarita, Gina, everybody. Just want to thank all of them. It was a great event, and look forward to doing it again next year. Also, my sister is up in the Santa Clara fires. It has been evacuated three times from three different locations, so I just ask for prayers for the family and everyone up there.
Okay. Mr. Vera?
Yes, I want to also comment on the city-county dinner. So I know the ladies did a beautiful job. I was pleasantly surprised when I walked in the community center. It looked beautiful. Also, the grounds on the outside were just meticulous. I went that afternoon to drop off some flowers, and when I pulled in, it just, everything was green and cut and, oh, it looked so pretty. So it was, and I've noticed, driving around town, some nice things happening in our parks and in our neighborhoods. I don't know if you've just been over in my neighborhood lately or not. Anyway, things are looking really good, so I appreciate all of that. Also, Mr. Hernandez, thank you for bringing to our attention the events on October 20th. I think that's really neat, and I'm going to definitely try to attend, being, my husband and I both graduated from Atwater High, and seven of our children also. So anytime we can do anything to honor the alumni here, especially our veterans, I think that's a really neat program. So whatever you're doing to help that out, thank you, and I will try very hard to attend that. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Mr. Vineyard?
Cancer. It affects everybody. There's actually 10 of the 12 months of the year where there's some type of cancer awareness. Here's the calendar. Well, this month is two of them. Breast cancer awareness, AKA the pink, and liver cancer awareness, Emerald Green. So if you know somebody, hold them close, remember them, do as many things as you can with them. A lot of people beat it, some people don't, but it's something we all have to be aware of. Liver cancer can sneak up on you. I have a good friend who's going through treatment now, and had no idea that he had the problem until it was almost too late. On a more detailed note, ordinance review. We obviously had one tonight with fireworks. There's still ordinances on the book that conflict with each other. There's still ordinances on the book for traffic, et cetera, parking, that don't have any teeth. So it ties the hands of the police department. We need to look at those ordinances. And there's some of those I think the CDRC can look at for us. And maybe eliminate, combine, whatever it takes, to try to get them fixed. I know I've read several, I've had people constantly come up to me and talk to me about one ordinance, and then they find out there's something else, another ordinance that contradicts it, and it drives the public insane. So I'd like to try to start doing that, or have us start doing that. This Saturday, October 14th, is the Volunteer Appreciation Day. Farmers Market, I believe, downtown, starts at 9:00 to 4:00. As much as I'd like to be there, I won't. I'm giving a ride away that evening, and we're having to get things together. So I hope they have a great turnout down there, because I know they want to make this a monthly or bimonthly event. Thank you.
Mr. Raymond, go ahead with whatever remark that you want to make.
I was just going to congratulate Mr. Vineyard.
Oh, okay.
That's a huge event.
Yes, it is. Empty Nester?
She's been out of the house for a while, but it's the last one of two, so it's been gone.
All right. Mr. Creighton?
I just wanted to thank Lori and Justin also for the city-county dinner, and everybody else that participated. Great job. The steaks were fabulous, and the place looked phenomenal. And also, I want to thank Dave Souza for coming out and doing the program that night. He spent a lot of his time and money on that, and we got a lot of compliments from every jurisdiction in the county that attended. And we showcased Atwater in a positive light, and that was really refreshing. Opposite of that, I want to discuss something. One of my biggest concerns and responsibilities I have sitting here on the dais is keeping a watchful eye on the city's finances. It's no secret that the city is going through difficult times right now. We're working hard to reduce our debt and help build a solid financial future for our city. That is the council's obligation, what you entrusted us with. The residents of Atwater have put their trust in us to do exactly that, and one tool given to us by the people was a Measure H, the temporary half-cent sales tax that was intended to augment the general fund and provide public safety, police and fire in particular. The residents of Atwater have put their faith in us and gave us their money and protection with the Measure H, until we can get the general fund in a position to shoulder that debt and be financially stable. Now, there's some talk of we want to extend the Measure H another 25 years. If we're for that foolish to do that, then we'd be breaking our promise to the people that we said this would be a temporary 10-year tax. For the next 25 years, an additional tax without addressing our city's financial issues would be reckless, and I can't support that. Thank you.
This past week, I was fortunate to go to the Excellence in Education Awards at the Merced Theater. And we had two. Mary Monroe, now, in my day, a long time ago, we called them librarians. Now they call them librarian-media specialists. Any case, Mary Monroe was chosen as the librarian, I will say, of the year. And she is from Atwater Elementary School District. And we also, in addition to all of the other ones throughout the county, we had Carrie Obera. And she is a teacher over at, God, I can't read this stuff with my one good eye. Any case, she is a 34-year elementary school teacher, and she was chosen as the Teacher of the Year, right here from Atwater. And part of the presentation of Carrie was to say that her classroom was like Disneyland. And they presented a video, and here's Carrie with her kids in there, and they were freaking out, dancing and doing all this stuff. Who does this stuff? She does, and it works. And I'm so glad that we have somebody like Carrie in our school system to teach our children, because she does a real good job, and she was recognized for that as the School Teacher of the Year. Wanted to also, you know, being as old, Mr. Creighton made some comment to it, understand something. When I went and I talked about Measure H, you know, 25 years is something for discussion. It's not a proposal, it's for discussion. And not supporting that, I think, let's be honest, when Measure H came out, I voted against it. And the reason I voted against it was because I felt that the city council, for one thing, they were still taking money and benefits, and I thought, you know, if they can still do that, and we can still threaten police officers with layoffs and the like, then I couldn't support it. Since then, we have, you know, clawed and scratched our way along, and there's one thing that is abundantly clear, that if there's one thing I've learned over the last three years, we're doing the best we can, we're getting better. It's not as quick as we would like. Things in the retail market, and that have hurt us. But there's one thing for sure. If we don't have Measure H to supplement, not to be the sole source of revenue for public safety, then what do we have? We, you know, good thoughts and wishes and all this are all fine, but we do not have revenue to continue to do that. And the 10 years, I think, at the time it was presented, I think, was something that was way too short. I thought that if you're going to do that, then it should be a much longer period, and if it works out, then you can dissolve it. We need to have discussion on this, but it's apparent that we need to have that supplemental income for public safety. And hopefully, we'll have more discussion in the future on this and get it on the ballot, and let you, the people, decide on that. That's all I want to say on that matter. Lastly, Mr. Vineyard kind of started it off by talking about the cancer thing. Well, I, this past weekend, my brother, my elder brother, came driving all the way across country from Georgia, and he came up to Long Beach, where he attended a reunion of dock workers that he used to work with down there, came up to our place here in Atwater. And one of the things that he has been doing is fighting lung cancer since 2002. And upon his arrival here, he dropped the bombshell on us that that cancer has returned. And once he gets back to Georgia, he'll be going through further treatment and that to hopefully eradicate it once again. He's gone through numerous operations and treatment, chemotherapy, you name it, he's gone through it. And he's a survivor to that extent. Left out of here, got up to Reno to visit a friend of ours from high school, and his wife got out of the car, stepped on the curb, fell and broke her hip. It's not done good a couple of days. So she just went through surgery this morning and had that repaired. But point being is that, you know, I hate cancer. I hate it worse than anything. I've had friends, and as Brian mentioned last week, Bart Krotick, older brother to Andy, he's fighting his issues with it. And I hope and pray that my brother is going to come out on top of this. I think he will. And God love you, Dave. With that, okay, yeah. We are going to adjourn this meeting to Wednesday, the October 11th, 8:30. And we are going to have this selection process for interviews for city manager, and we will have that out at Castle Commerce Center. And we will adjourn this meeting to that 8:30 meeting. Yes, sir?
Did you mention about the Atwater?
Yeah, on the 14th, right?
Yeah.
That's the one that Mr. Vineyard mentioned.
I appreciate it.
Did we wake you up, Brian? Okay. With that, we are adjourned.